Hi Kent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Vice Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you. We are waiting for a couple of people and then we'll get started. Good, thank you. So Tom, evidently we're being delayed by the Deck Park Tunnel being closed.
That would make sense. I'm stuck on the highway. That's why I called in. I didn't want to be the one to blow all things up.
Okay, I do, I do now have a quorum, so I think we will get started because we have a long day ahead of us.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Attorney General Lindsey Perry, Arizona Auditor General, Lindsey Perry and David Glennon will give us a presentation regarding the Maricopa County Fiscal Year 2023 Audit.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Chairman Sellers, nice to see you. Member Hickman, nice to see you as well. I think we have Member Galvin online or on the phone. Okay. Lindsey Perry, the Auditor General, good morning. Appreciate you inviting me and my team to be here today. Before we discuss the county's audits, just wanted to kind of refresh your memory on the Auditor General's Office. We're a legislative agency made up of nonpartisan staff. We provide impartial information and specific recommendations on state and local operations, including Maricopa Counties. We are well-versed in and follow various governmental accounting and auditing standards. So similar to our previous presentations, we're here today in accordance with state law, which directs that the County Board of Supervisors to require its auditors, my office, to present the results and findings at a board's regular meeting without the use of a consent agenda. That just went quite quickly. Okay. And so this is a great opportunity for us to be in front of you, to provide you information about the county's fiscal year 23 audits and also answer any questions that you have. So I'd like to thank the county staff for their efforts in assisting us with the various audits. It's been a long process, but every year we have great coordination between your teams and my office. So we've issued three audit reports. The first audit report is our financial statement audit report, and we'll be discussing this, plus our report on internal control and compliance in our single audit report. So the first, our financial audit report, as we've done in the past when we send these to you, we send a report link along with the highlights. I'm happy to report that for fiscal year 23, that we reported an unmodified, clean opinion for your first report, which means that the financial statements of the county are reliable. For our second report, the report on internal control and compliance, this is also included in our single audit report, and this is where we report any findings and recommendations resulting from the county's financial statements. So we reported six findings on the report of on internal control, and Dave Glennon, who was the financial audit manager for the county, will walk through those in just a bit. Finally, that single audit report includes an assessment of the county's compliance with the federal audit, federal requirements for its federal programs, and includes the federal expenditures in our opinion on it. The objective of that audit is to obtain reasonable assurance about whether there's material noncompliance with the compliance requirements, whether was occurred due to fraud or error. The report allows the federal government to understand the county's spending of federal monies in compliance with the requirements. It requires that the county issue this report by March 31st of every year, and the county was on track and issued it prior to that due date, as you can see, March 29th. And so this report allows the federal monies to continue to flow to the county, which is a very important piece for the county. So we did not report any single audit findings, which, you know, that is a real positive thing. So without further ado, what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Dave. He'll go through some of the five-year trends of the county expenditures, revenues. We'll walk through the prior year audit findings and where the county is at on implementing our recommendations, the new findings, and then some other matters that we want to bring to your attention, and then of course, stop us if you have any questions. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Madam Kirk, will you advise when, I think Supervisor Gates was trying to get on by phone on his way here?
Chairman, yes, I will let you know once he joins the line. I don't believe he is on Supervisor Gates.
And have we heard from Supervisor Guyerda?
No, I have not.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
TJ, can I drink Bill's coffee this week?
Okay, thank you. Chairman Sellers, board members. My name is Dave Glennon, and it's great to see you again. It's also...
Is the microphone on? I can't...
Testing. I just need to get closer. Thank you. Yeah, it's great to see you again, and it's great to avoid the closure of the Deck Park Tunnel. So I will be covering for Maureen Bell. She couldn't make it, so I'll be doing her part as well. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Because our reports can be detailed and complex, we also prepare audit report highlights, a two-page summary that you received with the reports. The highlights include the county's largest primary revenue sources and how the county used those monies over the last 10 years, as well as our key findings and recommendations. I would like to take the opportunity to present some key financial information for the county over the last five years included in the highlights. The county's four main sources of revenue continue to be shared state sales taxes, county sales taxes, federal and state grants and programs, and county sales taxes. As you can see from the graph, the county's shared state sales taxes and county sales taxes have increased in each of the past five years due to a strong economy. Thank you. In the past year alone, these revenues increased by a combined $88.1 million. Further, the county's federal and state grants and programs have increased substantially from fiscal years 2019 to 2021. However, these revenues decreased by $45.6 million between fiscal years 2022 and 2023 due to reductions in COVID-19 pandemic funding. County property taxes have remained relatively consistent over the five-year period. As you can see from this graph, the county's four primary expense purposes consist of public safety, health and welfare, general government, and highways and streets. Public safety expenses increased by $140.2 million from the prior year, primarily due to excess contributions the county made to pay down pension liabilities. Health and welfare expenses increased substantially from fiscal years 2021 through 20, I'm sorry, 2019 through 2021 due to the spending of federal grant programs for COVID-19 pandemic recovery projects. In fiscal year 2021, these expenses peaked at $919 million, which was $394.7 million greater than fiscal year 2019 pre-pandemic levels. General government and highways and streets expenses have almost doubled over the past five years. This graph highlights the five-year trend of the county's revenues and expenses. As you can see, the county's revenues, shown in light blue, have exceeded its expenses, shown in dark blue since fiscal year 2019. Also, as you can see with the black line, the county's net position has increased every fiscal year since 2019. Most importantly, the county's overall net position increased by $346.5 million in fiscal year 2023. Total net position for the county was over $4.9 billion as of June 30, 2023, an increase of nearly $1.5 million or 42% since fiscal year 2019. It is important to note that not all of the net position balance was spendable at the end of fiscal year 2023 because $4 billion of this balance was invested in capital assets and $921.7 million was restricted for specific uses such as public safety and highways and streets. That left an unrestricted balance of $17.7 million. Finally, I would like to highlight the county's federal expenditures that are presented each year in the single audit report. Although the county received grants from 14 federal agencies during fiscal year 2023, the largest amount, over 51% of its federal expenditures, was from the U.S. Department of Treasury, as shown in the table, which provided federal assistance for COVID-19 pandemic recovery projects. You can also see substantial increases in total federal expenditures, starting in fiscal year 2020, with expenditures more than tripling between fiscal years 2019 and 2021. As we discussed earlier, these large increases were primarily because of COVID-19 pandemic assistance monies the county received, including the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, Coronavirus Relief Fund, and Emergency Rental Assistance Program. The COVID-19 pandemic grants are for a limited time, and the county's federal grants and expenditures began decreasing starting in fiscal year 2022 and continued to do so in fiscal year 2023 as projects were completed. Before I discuss the fiscal year 2023 audit findings, I wanted to point out that the county prepared a summary schedule of prior audit findings included at the end of the single audit report. This schedule reports the status of each prior year audit findings that were not fully corrected at the end of fiscal year 2023. The county reported a status of fully corrected for three of seven prior year audit findings, starting with finding 2021-101, which identified nearly $1.7 million in question costs because the school superintendent's office, or CSS office, lacked documentation to support how indirect costs for which it received federal reimbursement were necessary and reasonable. This finding is considered fully corrected because the county has resolved it with its grantor, the U.S. Department of Education, which required the CSS office to return nearly $1.4 million, the amount of question costs that were disallowed. The county also reported the status of finding 2022-101 as fully corrected because the Human Services Department implemented policies and procedures to pay emergency solutions grant program subrecipients for program expenditures within the required 30-day timeframe. Lastly, the county reported the status of finding 2022-102 as fully corrected because the CSS office resolved the finding with its grantor, the U.S. Department of Education, during the grant's closeout period. The county reported the statuses of four prior year audit findings as partially corrected. We reported findings in the current year's single audit report that were similar to prior year findings 2022-01, 2022-02, and 2022-03, which I will go over shortly. The county reported the status of finding 2022-103 as partially corrected because it is waiting on a management decision from its grantor, the U.S. Department of Treasury, which could include an action to repay question costs that are disallowed. We did not report a similar finding in the current year because the Human Services Department strengthened its internal controls to help prevent suspicious activity over program payments. Okay. So moving on now to the findings in the current year's single audit report. The single audit report is where you will find the financial statement findings, along with the county's responses to them. The first financial statement finding we reported was that the county did not accurately report its capital assets in prior year's financial statements. During fiscal year 2023, the county identified errors in its beginning net position and capital assets balances of $47.1 million because in prior years, various county departments failed to report accurate information to the Office of Budget and Finance. County management decided that the prior year's financial statements did not need revision and corrected the county's fiscal year 2023 financial statements by restating its beginning net position and capital asset balances. To correct this finding, we recommend the county, one, ensure all county departments follow the county's policies and procedures for recording and reporting capital assets, including construction in progress, and two, improve the county's procedures to require all county departments to, A, develop project management policies and procedures that are responsive to the risk associated with capitalizing project expenditures, and B, document their reviews of construction projects before providing annual capital assets information to the Office of Budget and Finance. The county reported that it anticipates correcting this finding and implementing recommendations by June 30, 2024. The second financial statement finding identified deficiencies in the county's process for managing and documenting its risk. Specifically, the county's process did not include identifying, classifying, and inventorying sensitive information that might need stronger access and security controls. To correct this finding, we recommend the county, one, ask responsible administrative officials and management over finance, IT, and county departments for input on the county's process for managing risk to develop, document, and implement policies and procedures that are, that effectively manage risk related to IT systems and data. Two, evaluate and manage the risk of holding sensitive information to assess where stronger access... access and security controls may be needed to protect data in accordance with state statutes and federal regulations. This finding was initially reported in fiscal year twenty seventeen. The county's administration and IT management reported that county departments were not able to implement previous policies and procedures developed by former county management, and that as of June thirty, twenty twenty-three, they were developing and documenting new written policies and procedures to address county departments' concerns. Further, they anticipate correcting this finding and implementing recommendations by June thirty, twenty twenty-five. The third financial statement finding identified deficiencies in the county's process for restricting access to its IT systems and data. Specifically, the county's control procedures for restricting access were not sufficiently implemented to consistently help prevent or detect unauthorized or inappropriate access to its IT systems and data. To correct this finding, we recommend the county, one, make it a priority to develop a process to ensure its IT policies and procedures for restricting access to IT systems and data are being consistently followed and are effective for restricting access. Two, implement processes to restrict access to its IT systems and data, including the following: A, assign and periodically review user/employee access ensuring appropriateness and compatibility with job responsibilities; and, B, enhance authentication requirements for IT systems. The county reported that it anticipates correcting this finding and implementing recommendations by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. All right, the next one. The fourth financial statement finding we reported was the county-
David, a quick question.
Sure.
Did we see a blip in the concern over IT procedures and, and control during COVID? Because we certainly drastically expanded the use of IT during that time period.
What do you mean by blip?
Well, did, did the, the concerns increase during that time period over what you were seeing in your audits?
We, what we saw in, in the audits was the county, the county had a, a finding over IT user access when we first did an expanded review back in twenty seventeen, and that finding was corrected in twenty twenty-two. And then this past audit, we, we had a, a similar finding for IT user access.
Okay, well, and because it's a major concern for us, and we want to ensure that we're doing everything correctly, I, I think someone from our IT group is here. Rich, would you come up and?
Good morning. Chairman Sellers, supervisors. So, as mentioned, I believe this relates to our active directory. So I don't, responding directly to your question, there probably was somewhat of an increase in active directory accounts during COVID because of all the contract hiring. What we've done since this finding, and we expect that this will hopefully be resolved in the next audit, is a much enhanced process for working directly with departments on reviewing all accounts for contractors and employees. So I believe the finding, correct me if I'm wrong, is there are some accounts that have been inactive due to password resets or passwords expiring, and it's OET's responsibility to work directly with departments to vet all of those accounts very carefully to see if they are appropriate for disabling the account. For example, recently, we did, and we've implemented a process to review every one of those accounts on a regular basis. Our business engagement managers, which are our primary contacts with the departments, they work with those departments to identify every account and determine whether we should disable those accounts. So I think we have significantly improved our procedures around this to mitigate any issues moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may have Rich clarify, those accounts are disabled and the employee does not have access to them, so you do not feel it poses a security risk, but it is something that we need to clean up, correct?
Yes, very important point. When the password expires, there is no access by the employee, but we do officially want to go in as a matter of best practice and actually disable those accounts in active directory.
Chairman Sellers, if I may, these, these areas are areas that my team looks at and has been looking at since two thousand seventeen. And so it's, there's two findings that are very robust, and the county is making progress to that end. The other thing I would like to point out is the county holds a lot of classified information. And so part of our finding gets to what is accounting doing to identify, to inventory, and to sort of classify that. So you restrict access to only those that need it. That way, not everybody has access to personally identifiable information or other sensitive information, so that if something happens, there are protections in that, that hacker who, or whoever wants to cause damage can't get very far. And so that is a, a really, really intense process. I probably don't need to tell you about sort of figuring out how much of this data exists out there. How do you classify it? How do you identify it? How do you inventory? And then who do you give access to that? So that's another key component in this.
And certainly, we, we went through all of this when we had a lot of challenges and election issues and people from outside of the county asking for access to things that we felt they didn't, they really did not need access to and would jeopardize our, our IT security.
I'd like to add specifically to that concern. So we have recently implemented a tool called Veronis. It's a very sophisticated data classification tool. We've implemented, configured that. We actually have a process to work through every department, show them reports for all of their classified or sensitive data, and then this tool also provides us the ability to start locking down the access. The end result is really, as you suggest, we want to control and limit access to any sensitive data on our network. So great progress has been made there. I think you will also see shortly a new policy for data classification that is pending final review and approval.
Yeah, Supervisor Gates, what we're talking about is IT security.
I was listening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, I, you know, just so the public understands, I don't, I don't know, I've lost track of how many times our own security divisions have talked about who's trying to attack us, the nefarious characters, how we're responding, and, and responding is by creating these bulwarks that, but thank you for identifying that because, you know, it's hard enough for a county this size, but it's even hard for businesses, you know, small businesses that are with ransomware and everything else. So I appreciate, you know, your findings, and I appreciate us being on top of this stuff. So thank you, thank you for, for that.
All right, so I'll go ahead and pick back up again here. We're on the fourth financial statement finding, and that was, we reported the county's failure to withhold FICA and federal and state income taxes for one of two state-funded retention and recruitment incentive payments it made to eligible sheriff's office employees because its newly implemented payroll system was not accurately programmed. The county made the first incentive payment in January twenty twenty-three, and the missed employee FICA taxes totaled three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, and the missed federal income tax withholdings totaled one point one million dollars. In April of twenty twenty-three, the county properly withheld the missed employee FICA taxes from the first incentive payment for employees who received a second incentive payment. However, it failed to collect employee FICA taxes totaling one thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars from eight employees who terminated prior to receiving a second incentive payment. Further, county management decided to not withhold federal and state income taxes from employees who received the second incentive payment because doing so would have resulted in a greatly reduced net payment for most employees. While it notified the affected employees in February twenty twenty-three of their responsibility to pay federal and state income taxes when they file their twenty twenty-three tax returns, our testing identified three employees who were not notified because they terminated before the county sent the notification. Lastly, the county withheld excess employee FICA taxes totaling eleven thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars on wage payments to Election Day workers because it did not properly review the county's consultant's work. The county was unable to reimburse the affected employees since it had already remitted the taxes to the IRS, and it instead notified the affected employees so they could claim reimbursement of the excess tax withheld from the IRS. To correct this finding, we recommend the county, one, immediately pay to the IRS any employee FICA taxes owed; two, immediately notify the three former employees of their obligation to pay the missed federal and state income taxes on the first incentive payment, and continue to pursue collection efforts for the uncollected employee FICA taxes; and, three, follow the established policies and procedures for making system programming changes and testing the changes to ensure that the system operates as intended and in compliance with federal and state tax laws, and develop and implement written policies and procedures to review consultant's work. The county reported that it anticipates correcting this finding and implementing recommendations by June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
I'd like to call Mike McGee to come up and answer any questions our board might have on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
I'll, I'll just ask a question, Mike. Can you, can you take us through that a little bit? We're dealing with FICA and, and taxes withheld or not withheld. Can you just tell us, you know, what might have occurred there and how to make up for this?
Yeah, so what happened is that we implemented Workday a couple of years ago, as you know, and this occurred in early twenty twenty-three, where some of the employees that were receiving stipends at MCSO, the FICA was set up improperly in the system for Workday for those stipends. And so it did not withhold the appropriate taxes. And subsequent to that, they noticed that that occurred in February, they took corrective actions to try to notify the employees that this would be corrected on their second stipend payment, so they would expect an additional amount withheld. The finding, so most of it was corrected except for a few individuals that terminated prior to that second stipend. But the core cause of the problem was the misconfiguration for the taxes in Workday.
Yeah, I just, I just am hopeful, you know, the public, when they hear that, we, we want to see how we've identified that and how we can fix the problem quickly, and it sounds like we're on it.
Yes, we identified the issue soon after, and the sheriff's office took corrective actions right away to make sure that that was fixed.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Okay, and turn on your mic, if you would, please.
Yeah, I think this is better, microphone's better here. So I just have a few slides to finish up on, and I think I left the clicker up there. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we're on to the fifth financial statement finding, and the fifth financial statement finding we reported was inaccuracies in how the county's school superintendent's office reported juvenile detention center education programs, operations to the Arizona Department of Education, or ADE. Specifically, in June of twenty nineteen, the office reported to ADE that it had separated program operations from its accommodation school beginning in fiscal year twenty twenty, qualifying it for alternative funding that may have resulted in a higher or lower amount of funding than the office otherwise would receive if it continued to operate its program within its accommodation school. However, the CSS office never fully separated its program from its accommodation school. For example, the CSS office continued to direct state payments for program operations to the accommodation school, which controlled the funds, maintained the program's accounting records, and processed the program's payroll and other expenditures. The CSS office received a total of three point six million dollars from ADE for program operations for fiscal years twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three, which may be more or less than it would have received if it had reported to ADE that it continued to operate the program through its accommodation school. Therefore, the office risks receiving less state funding to support program operations. However, if the CSS office received more state funding than it was statutorily entitled to, the state overpaid for the program. To correct this finding, we recommend the CSS office, one, either develop and follow a process for separating program operations from the accommodation school in accordance with its reporting to ADE, or inform ADE that it is not separating program operations from the accommodation school. Also, ensure that the program receives the correct statutory funding based on whether or not program operations are separated from the accommodation school. This finding was initially reported in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, and the CSS office has made some progress in addressing our recommendations. For example, it worked with ADE management to identify if the program was overfunded in fiscal years twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two, and was informed then that ADE cannot calculate the program's funding if it would have reported the program's operations through its accommodation school. The CSS office reported that it anticipates fully correcting this finding by June thirty, twenty twenty-four. The sixth and final financial statement finding we reported was that the CSS office paid twenty-one thousand nineteen dollars for purchases the former assistant county school superintendent made with a county purchasing card that did not comply with county policy, risking misuse of public monies and violation of the Arizona Constitution. Specifically, the CSS office paid for fifty-one purchasing card purchases of services, travel, supplies, software, food, and other items without independently reviewing or approving them as was required by county policy. Further, the former assistant county school superintendent did not report thirteen travel-related purchases totaling five thousand eighty-two dollars on the required travel authorization and expense form, and did not obtain advanced approval for two food purchases totaling one thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. To correct this finding, we recommend the CSS office, one, require its employees to follow the county's established policy when using purchasing cards, and, two, periodically monitor employee card holder purchasing card purchases and notify the Office of Procurement Services when an employee fails to follow county policy, so the county can take timely and appropriate corrective or disciplinary, disciplinary actions, such as revoking credit card privileges and requiring repayment of unallowable purchases. This finding was initially reported in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, and the office reported it is in the process of implementing new policies and procedures to address our recommendations and anticipates correcting this finding by June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Just want to close with a, a few more, a few additional matters. The Maricopa County Regional School District issued its fiscal year twenty twenty-three annual financial report in April. As you know, the district's audit is performed by an outside CPA firm and not by us. However, I wanted to take this opportunity to clarify our responsibility in regard to the district's financial information included in the county's annual comprehensive financial report, or ACFER. The county reports the combined activities of the Maricopa County Regional School District and the Juvenile- and the Juvenile Detention Center Education Program as a special revenue fund named Accommodation Schools in its ACFR. Since the Accommodation Schools is a non-major fund, meaning it is below the threshold for reporting separately in the county's governmental funds financial statements, its activity is combined with that of the other 100-plus non-major governmental funds for financial reporting purposes. Therefore, we do not need to rely on the separately audited Maricopa County Regional School District's annual financial report. However, subsequently, we became aware of issues noted in the district's report, such as the qualified opinion resulting from the district's failure to record a $7.5 million liability and a substantial doubt over the district's ability to continue as a going concern. Although we don't rely on the district's separately audited report, we will consider the risk to the county's financial statements when we perform the upcoming fiscal year Next, I wanted to point out that the county is late in submitting its fiscal year 2023 annual expenditure limitation report, or AELR, to our office. Arizona revised statutes requires counties to submit an AELR to our office by March 31st. County management notified our office on March 29th that it needed additional time to submit their fiscal year 2023 AELR to review the reporting of opioid settlement revenues and anticipated submitting the report by May 31st. On May 31st, county management notified us the county's analysis is taking longer than expected and revised their anticipated submission date to June 30th. We know you're meeting on this topic in an executive session following this meeting, and we wanted to emphasize the importance of submitting the report to us because the delayed issuance of this report prevents you and others from having timely access to key financial information that is needed to make important decisions about the county's operations. Once we receive the report, we will conduct an attestation engagement in accordance with professional standards, which will require us to express an opinion on whether the AELR is presented in accordance with the Uniform Expenditure Reporting System in all material respects. This engagement will take several months to complete, and we will notify you when we release the report. This completes our presentation of the county's fiscal year 2023 audit reports, including the six reported findings. Just want to thank Chair Sellers, members of the board, and County Manager Pocorski for having us present our audit results and findings today. I'd also like to thank Mike McGee and all county staff once again for their cooperation on the audits. We have had a great working relationship with county management and staff. Are there any questions that we can answer for you concerning the county's audits?
Does the board have any questions for David or for the auditor general? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, that concludes item number one. Item number two, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We will move into exec session.